That would be wonderful.
Yep, I will do that. All persons testifying will be deemed parties of the application and must provide their name and full mailing address. The city code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to the criteria and findings of fact, or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure of reason issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body or the applicants an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or land use board of appeals or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial levity here, any applicant may ask the planning commission for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimonies that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing or continuance to a time and date certain or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony.
Thank you. Okay. Now Matt.
Okay, you got it. Good evening Chair, fellow commissioners. Matt Straight presenting tonight's agenda item for staff. The project is located on a private street, Steelhead Run Drive between Old Salem Road and I-5. The zoning on the property is limited industrial. The applicant is requesting to expand the existing use on the site. The site currently features three buildings, two of those are attached, they total about 25,000 square feet. The application proposes to convert the existing warehouse building into offices, add a second story over the existing warehouse for additional office space, construct a new 13,650 square foot steel building that will feature a storage section and a service shop, and add additional streetscape landscaping and additional parking with landscaping as well internal to the site. To explain this another way, I wanted to show this slide that shows the elevation here at kind of an oblique. And this shows here in red, the existing structures, the offices to the left and the warehouses currently to the right. It doesn't have a second story today. And this is where they want to convert the existing warehouse into more offices. And those existing offices you see on the left, those are supposed to remain as offices. They want to build a second story over the new office space and this will be office space as well, conference rooms and such. They're going to have plenty of office space. This section shown in yellow shows where the new shop is going to go. And this section in purple shows the new storage area that they're proposing. So in order to support the project tonight, we have to show that it meets the required criteria. So let's walk through those real quickly. The project can't conflict with the comprehensive plan or with the state goals. The proposed expansion that they have is consistent with the zoning purpose, which implements the comprehensive plan and its policies. So we found that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. The project also cannot conflict with any city codes. And based on staff's review of the proposed expansion, all the zoning requirements are met. Lot coverage is 80%, which the project complies with. And most of the other standards like lot area or lot depth or width, even building height, are determined on a case by case basis by the planning commission. There are a few standards that the applicants needed some conditions of approval to comply with, and we're going to talk about those in a little bit. The project cannot have any adverse impacts on traffic. The project will result in some additional truck traffic and we're anticipating some additional trips as well in passenger vehicle cars based on the increase in the office space. But those don't trigger any kind of thresholds for a traffic study. And we're not anticipating that it's going to impact the street capacity in the area in any negative way. All the utilities must be on site for the project. In this case, they already had existing structures on site, so all the utilities are already there. And the project can't have any adverse impacts to flooding or drainage waves. Now this site is located adjacent to Crooks Creek, which is a fish bearing stream. And our code indicates that if you're adjacent to a fish bearing stream, you have to have a 50-foot setback from the top of bank. And we worked extensively with the applicant to find exactly where that was. And in the exhibits they gave us, Janelle and I are comfortable in saying that their new proposed building is within that or outside the 50-foot setback requirement. And therefore it's consistent with that requirement. The project is not allowed to create any kind of nuisances or store any hazardous materials in a way that could potentially become a nuisance to the neighbors. Now the applicant hasn't indicated to us exactly what they're going to store in the warehouse. But we do propose, the proposed building classification in the application would indicate that hazardous materials are not allowed to be stored. The building classification they provided is for storing regular merchandise. But in certain quantities, the hazardous materials would need a different kind of building classification. And so should those be stored, those kind of hazardous materials be stored in that, classification would need to change. And that could substantially change the setbacks or the design of the structure. Now we're talking about the fire setbacks, not the planning setbacks, building setbacks. And so we've told them that in the events that happens and the design substantially changes, be that the building site plan, they would have to come back through the planning commission to address those changes. And we've taken a memo and handed it out to the planning commission that contains an additional notice that we're planning on adding to the final decision to make that more clear.
Quick, I think we have some background noise coming from one of the participants. And so if you're not speaking, if you could mute your mic, that would be great. Thank you.
No problem, no problem. The code requires landscaping in the streetscapes and in the parking areas. And again, this is, we've left the criteria now. We're talking about the standards more specifically. The applicant didn't provide us any landscape plans, but we've added a condition of approval that requires the submittal of detailed landscape and irrigation plans for both the streetscape and the parking areas as well. And this will require landscaping to completely fill in the street frontage. You can see some of the frontage here is showing an area where it's just dirt today. We're proposing that that be filled in, and that's part of our conditions of approval as well. The frontage needs to be fully landscaped, so it looks more like some of these other industrial buildings that are located only a block away. You can see there's lush landscaping between the street and the structure here on this existing building on Western Way. And we want the parking areas to look more like you see in this industrial area as well. The standards from the code also require parking areas to feature landscaped islands at the end of parking rows. And these are going to include trees based on what the code requirements require. 5% of the parking area is also required to be landscaped with trees as well. Again, the landscape plans have been required by a condition of approval. And those conditions also clarify that the islands and trees need to be added to the parking area as well. So with that, staff recommends approval and a suggested motion has been added here to the screen. Happy to answer any questions. The applicant is on the line as well.
Mr. Straight, this is Commissioner Rahm. I have a question. Inquiring minds want to know what fish species is inhabiting Creek.
Not just you.
I think I'll let Janelle answer that question.
Good one.
Birds in there all the time behind our house getting fish chow. So that is something I wouldn't eat, but there are suckers and things in there. So. I know.
I can't tell you the variety, the species, but I do know when the city did Project Long Millersburg Drive and then replaced the bridge up in Crooks Creek. The fact that we have fish bearing streams definitely came into play there. So. Yeah, I can't tell you what species, but Connie probably has a better idea than I.
I have a question, Matt, on the setback on the the slide that you have up on the setback from the creek. Can you show me where the 50 feet start and end?
Hey Chair. Do you see my cursor on the screen?
Yeah.
You can, okay.
You can see, well, it's, I should blow it up, but you can see the setback is here. This is what we have deemed the top of bank. Is that correct, Janelle?
Yeah, I mean, this view is a little hard to read at that scale, but it was based on, the actual creek channel is actually way down in the bottom there. It's and based on what the adjacent building had setback from, and that was, that was part of how we looked at that. And having been out there when we cleared the vegetation from there. And it's.
Okay, I can see, I can see the 50 feet here on the left side of the.
Yeah, so we, they proposed, you know, where it was, and we verified that based on our knowledge of the waterway.
Okay.
So is that 50 feet from current stream or from wintertime stream when we get a lot of water?
It's from top of bank, which isn't necessarily your flood situation.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Straight, could you go to the landscaping slide you had there?
Well, we don't have any landscape plans. Do you mean?
You'd shown us a slide with before. Yeah, there was dirt.
One moment, please.
I have a few pictures too, if you guys would like me to share of what our landscaping currently looks like.
Would you like that?
Oh, hang on, that's the one you wanted. There you go.
That's the one, yeah.
So, to the right, how far around is the landscaping going to cover? Just the straight or are we going to go into the cul-de-sac?
We didn't specify that in our conditions of approval. We just said that the extra landscaping here, the extra street frontage had to be landscaped, but the planning commission could certainly clarify that if you had that desire one way or the other.
I was just curious.
Frontage would mean their property.
Yeah, it would mean their, yeah.
Around the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, their property does go around the cul-de-sac and they would have to landscape all the street frontage that their property features, which would include this right up to their property line.
Okay.
Than just the straightaway.
And we actually have about all bark mulch back to that here at the cul-de-sac.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Matt?
Chair, we actually skipped over the portion of the questions for the commission on conflicts of interest. If you just want to make sure that gets entered into the record. It's the section three on the script. That's the top of the second page.
Okay. I have been going. Sorry. Okay, let's go back to that. Question three. Do any members of the commission want to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias? Do any members of the commission wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge a jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the commission? So do we simply have the applicant on the line? Is that the only other visitor we have?
I believe we're going to have someone from the public. I just got off the phone with someone looking for the meeting link. So there will be some member of the public that will probably want comment time.
Okay.
I can tell you, we've got, we've got three folks signed in right now who are not any commissioner staff. And one of them, I believe, is the applicant. I don't know about the other two.
Nolan, I'm the applicant side of things.
Okay, so let's go on then to, are there any brief clarifying questions of staff before we move on to the applicant's testimony?
No, I do believe we need to officially open the public hearing before we hear from anyone out there in the audience.
I think I did.
Oh, you did that before the presentation started? That's fine.
Well, I did before the roll call. Okay. Do you want me to reopen it?
If you wanted to do so in an abundance of caution, it certainly couldn't hurt.
Okay, all right, well then. Well, I was in the hospital for five days and just got out yesterday before, so my, I think my brain's addled. Tonight we're holding a public hearing regarding the Pratom expansion SP 20 dash. Now this has O3 on here, but it's O2.
Correct, it's O2.
Okay. The meeting will proceed as follows. The required disclosures will be read, which I finally did. Staff will make a presentation followed by the applicant. And then anyone else who wishes to address the issue will be given an opportunity. Members of the public will have a three minute each for testimony. Finally, there will be time for rebuttal by the applicant. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant, staff, or anyone else who testifies. I now call the meeting to order the public hearing. And there we go. Okay, now it's official.
Perfect. Now we can hear from the applicant if you want.
Yes.
So, yeah, Nolan Chirac here with Pratom Co-op. Obviously, don't feel like we're changing the scope. Our scope of business is providing agriculture inputs to growers and beyond in the valley here, which is what we're going to do more of. And we've been outgrowing our office for probably three years now, so we just, we need more office space. We need more warehouse space. The part that I think we are struggling with, we love beautification. It's definitely the prettiest place on the street. We're not opposed to adding landscaping street side there. We want to do that. Actually been in the works for a while. The barriers or the parking areas where you need landscaped inside of our organization, we feel like those are going to be forklift hazards, maybe vehicle hazards because we do have traffic in and out of there a lot. We don't know if there's any way we can, you know, like I said, add more vegetation, more beautification on the street side, which we're planning on to get away from trying to put those islands in place. And like I said, I do have, I do have some pictures as well, if you want to see what our organization looks like as of now.
Without the, without the islands? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying up in the front now. No, obviously we don't have the islands now. I just, you come out that street, we've had buildings put in in the last two years and they absolutely, three years, they absolutely look like a wreck right next door to us. We would love to be a part of beautification there, but it just feels, it feels like it's been a little bit, a little bit hard to make happen inside of our parking areas. We're broken up a lot the way it is. And then we've got garage doors, we've got forklifts, we just got enough traffic. It's going to be hard to not be a hazard, fall hazard, vehicle hazard, forklift hazard inside.
Are you talking about the area in the upper center?
No, I'm talking about, I believe, Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're supposed to have, what do you call those?
Lands. Landscape islands?
Yeah, the island portion. That's where we're talking is it's going to be hard to make islands in here and not be in everybody's way. And what we would consider hazardous as far as vehicles, forklifts.
So Matt, what are, what do you think, where are you thinking they would go and what they would look like?
Well, the code states that they have to be located at the end of rows. And so this is certainly a row of parking, so there's probably a landscape island here. This is a row of parking. So probably landscape islands here and here. I'm guessing the same would be true for all these different rows.
But I, but those are doors between those places, right?
Yes, those are garage doors there.
Yeah, so they can't put one there and there.
You can see in this example, they've got landscape islands here at the ends of where the vehicle cars park. And there's really no parking anywhere else around here. These are loading docks, not parking areas. That's why there's no landscape islands there. And even at the back of these loading docks, you see they've added landscaping. And Thai Square right next door has, I didn't, I couldn't get an image of that because Google Earth wasn't that current. You can see this slide here shows Thai Square in the front. You can see even in the distance there, they've got landscape islands in the back of their parking area as well. I mean, if this were gated to some variety and, let me go back to their slide. If they had a gated area on their project where part of it wasn't open to the public, perhaps that could be interpreted to mean that's interior to the industrial development and therefore maybe these don't apply because I think if you went into Wuchang and they had parking interiors their project beyond the fences, there's probably not landscape islands there, but there certainly should be for any of the other areas where people could park passenger vehicles, not necessarily trucks. Idea of trying to interpret the code in a way where maybe that only applied to certain areas, but in the end we felt we couldn't make that kind of an interpretation because the code is very short and very clear about where those islands are supposed to go. And that's why I put the text right here on the slide so you could see it. Parking lot shall have curved landscape, curved landscape islands and trees at the ends of parking rows. And I'm not sure that the forklifts would have a difficult time seeing them if there was landscaping in the islands as well. So that trees and everything else would allow the forklift operators to see where those islands were. I think there might be room for the planning commission to make some interpretations of this code here if the commission so desired, but we certainly didn't feel at the staff level, we can make such an interpretation.
The idea of islands is, I don't know if it's a misnomer, but it's misleading. Where I think in, you know, in terms of putting them at the end of rows, when I think of an island, I think, well, maybe in the whole middle of this section, there had to be an island and and, and we know that that's not true and.
And Matt and I looked at this from a traffic circulation standpoint, not obviously knowing the applicant's day-to-day operations, but just in general, we felt there were some places you could strategically locate some islands. Here buildings where maybe they wouldn't be in a path, so we didn't, like Matt said, we didn't feel comfortable removing that condition, but it's certainly something you could modify to be applicable to the site, to whatever degree you thought was appropriate.
Again, the planning commission can't change the code, of course, but the planning commission can certainly interpret the code where the code isn't clear. And if you as a commission feel that this text isn't clear enough, then you can certainly interpret it to mean something else. But we actually do explain in more detail in the code what the landscape islands are and the minimum dimensions of them and the plantings that have to happen in them. And so it's very specific in the code as to what these islands are and how big they have to be.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Connie, go ahead.
So, on that long building that there, so there's like three sets of, and the, and the last set at the bottom has more. Why couldn't there be less spaces there? And put some island, put an island there instead of a couple of spaces? And go move those two spaces over back to the back by the, there's three there by the river? And make that like five or six or something there? But make this, make there a little less there so we can't put islands in, but make more back there. I don't know what your intent for the three back there was, but could there not be five or six or more back there that we could then do what our code says? I'm asking a question. I don't know if it's doable.
Yeah, to me, this is a big industrial site with, it's not retail. Traffic is not going in and out, so they need to make it look pretty. They need to be able to function, getting trucks in and out and around buildings and like you said, forklifts and everything. If it was me, I'd forego the islands and just make sure we have some nice landscaping there.
Yeah, I would, I would love to show some pictures in the front of our facilities. I feel like maybe you guys don't think we're trying to beautify and work. Anybody else on our street level is.
Let them know, it's okay.
Is there a way we can see those now?
I think, can I, can I share now?
You should be able to. Letting in the bottom middle of the screen.
Gotcha. I've never used this platform before. Can you guys see my screen now?
We can.
Cannot, cannot see it.
There you go.
Now it's starting.
Okay. So here, here's, here's out by the street view of where you come into Steelhead Run Drive. And this is the landscaping that I guess, you know, in the last two years we've approved or added and let go and this is the extent of the island, a building that was born right, born, that was built right next to us a few years back, landscaping. There again, I guess maybe it's meeting the criteria, but there's no trees, there's no shrubs.
No bushes.
Yeah, there's the next one in the next forward property that's about, I think it's probably built three years ago. Here's the front view, which is somewhat of a disgrace. Again, the front view.
Pretty ready.
This is across the street from the building that we're just looking at. Obviously, this is an older building, so we maybe couldn't have anything to do with it. Then this is when you reach into our property, the first picture's right there on the left. So this is our property with the landscaping that I'm showing you now. Obviously, we care about landscaping. It's part of who we are. And when you get past the driveway in there, that's the back landscape that area on the back is what showed dirt in the pictures. We've actually been trying to figure out how to landscape that and get trees in there anyway, so I don't think we're very far off on that front. There again, just an inside view looking out of what our, what our facilities look like. Landscaping there, landscaping there inside as well. So I guess, yeah, I just wanted you guys to be able to see what, what we care about. We're not trying to get away from the beautification whatsoever, but we're really scared about functionality. A forklift backing into a curb and tipping over just is not something we want to deal with. We try to be as safe as we can, so. Thanks for allowing, allowing that time.
Thanks, Mr. Nolan.
Matt, based on the landscaping, the existing landscaping they have, and obviously they're doing a nice job on that. To me, the main thing is, is the outside perimeter. It would be nothing inside. Can we wave anything like the, like the islands that are out? Matt, like you said, it's not.
No, you sure can't, you sure can't. You can interpret the code to mean one thing or the other. That's where you have a little bit more wiggle room, but certainly not waving. We can't waive code provisions at all.
Mr. Straight, you used, you used Wuchang as an example being gated, fenced and gated. It looks.
They're gated. Looks like they're gated.
Sure. I don't think it's done with people to argue that the, the code requires landscape islands for places where the public is interfacing with the project. And if you want to argue that that fence is really a clear demarcation for where the public is and is not supposed to be, you could argue that everything interior to that site beyond the fence is really open to the public. And you could then argue that these code provisions don't apply to that.
There you go.
But that's not true, isn't it? Because I can go over there and buy stuff, so that is open to the public.
We don't have a storefront. We have an office where the farmer can come in. We don't, we don't encourage or necessarily want Mr. homeowner to come in for a 50-pound bag of fertilizer. We do.
But I want to buy from you.
Well. But we, so we do have probably two to three spots in front of the office that we consider publicly parking. And that's, that's all we ever do.
There you go. Perfect.
Well, and that would certainly mean, you know, by the office, that's where the visitors would go, the public would go. And so I'd be happy with limiting to the office area.
Second that.
Mr. Straight, from interpreting the paragraph that you put on the, on the screen there, it's a total of six islands if you count the three spaces in the back, correct?
Well, I was.
That slide again.
You didn't make that interpretation work.
You think so?
Well, that's, I was seeking clarification what a row is.
Because I was hoping that the planning commission would help clarify what a row is, because we weren't really sure either. If you take that to mean any place where there's more than one parking space, then you're right. It seems like any set of parking spaces would need at least one landscape island because it says at the ends of parking rows, which doesn't mean bookended. That means one end. So you could argue that there would be
Very good.
Four, five landscape islands. Depending on how you interpreted it.
I could see three.
I could see three.
Yeah.
What do you think, Mr. Nolan?
I mean, you, my, my preference is that we consider the office our public access point, which, which if you're looking at this picture here, the there'd be two or three of those. And if we're saying that we have a landscaped area at the end of a row, and we can clarify the difference between employee parking versus. row, and we can clarify the difference between employee parking versus customer parking, then we already have our land, this row where people are parked. And then we go back to, as a company wanting to beautify the, beautify the street-facing property and not do anything inside. We do have a lot of, again, that is honestly a very big concern of ours, because a forklift hits something like that, eight-inch curb, it could very well turn over. Obviously, we don't try to do that. We don't, that sounds like we're being unsafe. That's not the point.
So Mr. Straight, you said there was a definition for islands. The picture that's up on the screen now looks like it's at the end of a row of parking spaces. Does that meet the definition of our island?
That's a very vague question. It's up to interpretation. The definition for landscape island says, and I'm going off memory here, I might get it a little bit wrong, but it says it has to be at least three feet wide and shall include a tree and shrubs or something to that extent. And so you could certainly argue that that, what we're looking at is at three feet wide and contains shrubs and trees.
Multiple.
I think when Janelle and I looked at this, because the code wasn't crystal clear, we went to our more recent projects that we've had built, like Thai Square and VSI, and we were trying to make sure that all the industrial projects met that very high bar. If you go by there now, both of those projects look fantastic. And so we were trying to make sure that other projects like this followed suit with that. And so that's why we kind of went for that level. But again, it's kind of a planning commission to be able to interpret that section of the code if you feel it's not clear.
I think the applicant just demonstrated some beautiful pictures of their landscaping and the entrance into their property as looking fantastic.
True, but those weren't the landscape islands that we're talking about.
Yeah. At the end of the rows. I still would like to see the islands just for perhaps the client parking.
Yeah, public parking, those first three spots, right there. That's it.
Then I guess, I feel like we already have our island, because it doesn't say on both ends.
Exactly.
Consider that our island. We beautify the street frontage more with, with more landscape bushes, trees, whatever we do there, and consider this okay. That's, that's what I'm asking, I guess, as an applicant.
Well, and I guess I've interpreted islands to directly adjacent to the parking space itself. And I don't know if that's correct.
That is a parking.
There's a parking spot right there.
Curb right there.
Yeah.
And the, the, the three parking spots for where our offices are, that's the first one. Then there's two more, right beside.
Public parking.
So let's try and clarify what we're saying here, that this already meets that criteria?
I say yes.
What would your interpretation be, Matt and Janelle?
That's why they came to the commission.
Talking about the three spaces for public parking.
Well, I'm going to play the role of staff and be a very strict interpretationalist with what our code says, because that's kind of what my job is. It says at all the rows. And so I would say all the rows, but again, I leave it to the commission to interpret that differently if you, if you so desire.
Well, I don't have any problem.
I can put a site plan back up?
Yeah, no, sorry. I gotta, oh, stop. Sorry, I did not know I could, I didn't know you could steal it back.
I don't have any problem enforcing the code or interpreting the code as you did just now, Matt. But I do understand Mr. Nolan's concern about safety.
You can add one more thought to, a question you asked earlier about interpretation of what is a row. From an engineering standpoint, I would consider, if I was designing, a row to be all the, all the spaces along the front of each building, because they're just broken up by doors. You can't put a space there because there's a door.
Right.
So parking continues. So Matt, can you split that direction? Yeah, there you go. So just from a design standpoint, I would say a parking spot, this is one through 16 are a row and 17 through 24 are a row. But that's just another way to look at it.
Well, and I'm concerned about 17 through 24 as being the safety hazard.
I would accept those out of that because of the safety concerns. I would consider the existing island south of space 16 sufficient. And if we have to have an island at the end of the row, which it doesn't say we do, like Mr. Straight said, it doesn't have to bookend. We just have to have an island at the end of the row. We satisfy that row. But the top three spaces along the creek need to be addressed if we accept out 17 through 24.
So can we, I'm not entirely sure how we, how we decided we needed 27 parking spots either. But we, that was something that we had to build in here. So we just were making parking spots wherever there, we could find a parking spot.
Swing them around to the north side of the building.
Well, can we go back to street-side parking? Because it's a private street. And can we consider seven parking areas alongside of our street?
I'd have to look. I believe, well, I know that our code says that private streets have the identical standards as our public streets. And so it would really be a question of whether or not street-side parking is allowed to be credited in our code. And I don't believe that it is, but I'm not dead positive of that either. I'd have to take a look.
Well, I would love to, if you guys would, we have trucks that park along there all the time. I've came to the city, I've asked, and I've been told it's a private street. We can't do anything about it. So it sounds like now you guys are, now you guys can control it, but we couldn't at that point. And the sheriffs couldn't do anything about it. But we got everybody and their neighbors parking along that street.
The difference there is we don't have enforcement action over parking violations or traffic violations on a private street versus a land use code requirement that would say whether you can count parking on that street toward your overall parking. I think we're talking about two different things here.
No, I understand.
Hey, Matt, isn't, isn't the reasoning for these islands aesthetic?
Aesthetics, and it provides more shade for the cars that are there and lowers the heat island effect of all the pavement that is on this property. There's a lot of different reasons for that.
Okay, well, to me, the main thing would be aesthetics. And they've got the aesthetics up front. Why do they need it in the back of their industrial piece of property where there's nothing behind them?
Well, we saw it in the other industrial projects, that they have landscaping surrounding the project.
So Mr. Straight, can you pull up VSI's building that you have?
Sure, hang on.
Using that as an example.
Can you tell me why the two buildings right in front of us that were closed the last five years are allowed to have crap for landscaping there?
Wow, yeah. It's ridiculous.
So are you considering the circle on the left as meeting their condition of landscaping?
No, we don't have anything in our landscaping requirements that would require this. But we were just showing this, because they have landscaping in their working area as well. But over here, where we have cars parked, these have a lot of different landscape islands.
Yes, but those cars are parked away from the loading zone of all those trucks.
Correct. But I don't think that the applicant's project is going to have a lot of truck traffic in this front area here.
We have trucks.
And why landscape islands here or here would create a problem for forklifts. If forklifts start coming out into this area, that's generally for passenger vehicles.
I don't know where you're pointing at here and here. I don't see.
Sorry. In this front area here.
So there's, there's traffic between the two areas. There's a fuel island out in that top area. There's trucks that come in on one side to load. There's trucks that go in on the other side to unload constantly. There's a, there's a lot of truck traffic into this fertilizer plant, obviously. So yes, the trucks come in and out of both, both locations and load in and out of both locations. There is also, aren't you guys trying to change the classification of our property at this point too?
I'm not sure I understand your question. We're not trying to change, you mean the zoning classification? No.
Uh, we've, we've been dealing with our lawyers, because I heard it was trying to go in, uh, I was not.
We're doing, that was already approved by our city council last week.
Okay, which one, which one, which did that go? Did that go light industrial to what?
I don't have that committed to memory. I'd have to look. I'm not sure.
Limited industrial.
Application before us, though.
Well, I was, if it was coming up, I was going to ask if that was going to change what this would be pertaining to, if it was coming up. And I'm, for a hearing shortly, it could change the outcome.
Well, it's already been approved by our city council. It goes into effect here in about three weeks. And Janelle is looking right now to see what designation.
It did go to.
That's what I was going to say. And then if it went to a different designation, does that change up our requirements at all?
It went to limited, wait, I've seen the old line. Hang on. It's the same. Yeah, limited industrial.
Yeah, we were limited industrial before. It's limited industrial now. Some of the rules in the limited industrial zone have changed, some of the standards, but not very much.
It's not the landscaping, right?
So can I, can I ask a question of how did those two buildings that I showcased at the front of our property that were built in the last five years, how is that landscaping in that okay? And I interpret most of this as beautification, and we are trying above and beyond to beautify our location. And you guys would rather it look like crap, but meet the letter of the law.
Well, I can address that a little bit. The building on the front, that's a long old Salem, we've actually been in a code enforcement battle for a number of years with them to get them to clean up their landscaping. And we know that it doesn't look very good. We've been working with them to try and get that fixed. That's an ongoing code enforcement violation case that we're working on. The other building across the street, I think, predates all of us. And so we really can't speak to what the city has done in the past. Our job is just to enforce what the code says now. And past precedent is no reason for us to not require what the code requires now.
No, not, probably not. But man, talk about a class waiting to open up when everybody realizes that you're discriminating against new and letting old go. And those buildings.
All the new projects that you see that are built in the city of Millersburg are being held to the same standard and were requiring landscaping for all the projects. As I showed on the screen here, for the projects, they're just a block away from the existing cradle.
That's a, that's a very, 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 very long block. It's probably a mile away. But.
Nothing's been built since the new code's been approved last week.
Well, the code doesn't take effect yet anyway. It doesn't take effect for another three weeks.
So I, so yes, if we went back to clarifying those first three, our, our public access points, then we, then I would consider that we already have met that, because that's our public parking and private parking doesn't meet it. Yeah.
Well, just to remind the chair that we are still in the public testimony portion. There are some other people on the line that might want to speak, want to hear from them. And then we can close the public hearing and the planning commission can deliberate. We can try to make some decisions at that point.
Okay. As I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, if you wish to testify during this hearing, please state your address for the record when you present. When your name is called, you will have the three minutes to speak. If you have any written material or other evidence you would like us to see, please provide it to staff. The staff will distribute to the members of the commission and the applicant as well as the persons in the record. We will now ask for testimony for those in favor of the application. Very none. We will now hear from those opposed to the application. Okay. And then anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay. Does the staff have any further comments or clarification regarding this application? Or does any member of the commission have any questions for the staff or the applicant? I, I still, I still have some questions of what would be sufficient. I look at this schematic here, and I really, the only place where I see a curb could be, I don't see a whole lot of room down below this bottom, what is that, 16? I see perhaps on the top, the 20s, maybe one could be here.
Chair, let me, a second, a moment. And I just wanted to clarify if the public hearing was still open because you're still asking questions of the applicant? Or did you want to close the public hearing and enter deliberations where we would no longer hear from the applicant?
I can do that.
Whatever you want. Wanted to clarify it.
Matt, I did not think we were coming into this to have an argument, but thank you.
Okay.
Wow, got railroaded.
Put the picture back up, if you would, of that end, end parking spot that you already had a landscape.
I'm going to close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed. All right, now we can deliberate, Chair. What's your question, Steve?
Could you put the picture back up of the landscape down at the end of that, that you had the grass and the nice?
That was the applicant's picture. Do you want me to just pull up Google Earth?
Well, no, that's what I was asking, if the, if the applicant could put that picture back up.
I can stop sharing my screen.
Yeah, folks, go look at any other industrial place out there and ask me if this isn't one of the nicest ones already out there.
I understand that, Steve. And it is. It's, it's quite lovely.
I just don't understand why we have to have islands in an industrial piece like this, where trucks, forklifts, and all that are going on, when this is not a public place, although he has three public parking spots here, but it's already an island in itself. It's landscaped better than most yards are.
Mr. Villegas, I have to concur with you. And I would, I would give credit to that picture there being the satisfying requirement for an island on the south. However, with the islands of parking to the north, those three, and to meet the code, there's got to be an island somewhere north, east, west of those three spaces to meet the code, because that's a separate row. But I would accept spaces 17 through 24 as a safety hazard. Putting in any island there would create an undue safety hazard and approve their plan subject to an island going in around, somewhere around those three spaces to the north.
So our interpretation would be that.
That's mine.
The building is satisfied, and we just need one more by those north, or, yeah, by those three spaces. Perhaps on the west side.
Well, what about on the other end of that building? And I, and I do agree that that's all one row. So you've got the one side taken care of. What about putting some, and maybe not next to that parking space, but at the very end of the building where it wouldn't be a hazard? And that would satisfy the code. That's all I'm trying to do, satisfy the code. If we start making exceptions, then we're going to have to do it for everybody. And I think we need to try to stay within the code as much as we can. And I understand what you're saying totally. I really do.
Yeah, I don't see, why do we need an aesthetically pleasing piece of, piece of property at that far end when there's nothing beside that? That's, that's, that's probably, no public is going to see that.
Well, I don't.
That's something we have to take up the next time we work on the code.
Yeah, I don't disagree, Steve. It's just that our code says, and if we don't like it, then we need to propose to the city council, we want it changed.
Yeah, you can leave the code in there, but each, like you said, we'll have to make exceptions. But let's make those on an individual basis. The next guy.
What we're saying is that we, we interpret it differently. And our interpretation. I think what we're saying is that we, we interpret it differently. And our interpretation, my understanding, is that, that current island there satisfies that one by the front.
That's what I.
You need one more.
Oh, gosh.
By that, those three. Whether or not it makes sense, Steve, I mean, it does.
Yeah, let's do stuff that doesn't make any sense. It's crazy.
Well, I don't disagree with you, Steve, but you know, that's how we, we wrote the code, unfortunately.
So no exceptions to anything on the code then?
Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but if we start making exceptions, then, then what's good is the code at all? What did we spend two years for?
Every night, and exceptions, honey, come on.
Well, try to look at it this way. We're not really seeking exceptions. I think Anne nailed it when she said that we're not looking to waive anything or make any exceptions at all. All the planning commission's doing is interpreting the code to mean one thing or another. And I think you do have some degree of latitude in interpreting the code.
Okay.
And we've already interpreted it that we didn't want it to infringe upon safety.
Right.
And we already interpreted that this existing one was sufficient. But I don't see any interpretation that leaves us free to just cut out that top one.
Can I ask one question? Can we try to move those parking spots to curbs?
Not sure. Those three sparking, parking spots?
Yeah. Could we move those to street, street side and then get away from even having that island there? Because honestly, we probably won't, ever we had a requirement to get so many parking spots.
Good idea.
And I'm sorry, I know it's not, I apologize.
And what do you, Janelle, we had talked a little bit about this earlier, and I'm not sure we came to any conclusion about the requirements for parking spaces actually being able to be satisfied by on-street parking.
I'm sorry, Chair, were you asking me a question about that or?
Yes. Did we clarify that they could be used as numbers for their parking spaces?
From an engineering standpoint, I, I, this isn't something we looked at to see if the width of the street was appropriate to meet our requirements for on-street parking. I suspect it is, at least on one side, but Matt might have to answer whether our code would allow you to count that.
I don't know, I'm looking.
Look for that. So it's, this isn't something we came prepared to answer, but we can try to get that answer pretty quickly.
Yeah, that, that's a question I'd like answered for sure.
Madam Engineer, do we have any definition for a floating row and where the end of it might be?
A floating row as in a floating row of parking?
Yeah, those three spots to the north there.
Uh huh.
An island could be placed to the north of those spaces, eight feet wide, full length of those spaces, correct?
From a standpoint of could you physically put an island there? I believe so. There have been cases where, because of interesting site configurations, we've found out ways to incorporate the same amount of island into some different locations due to site constraints. So I would think there would be, to meet the intent of the code and not waive anything but to interpret, you know, what it's, I think you could say we'll provide an island that has the same function, same purpose, but in a slightly different location that works better with the site.
That's what I'm trying to accomplish.
Well, so if, can I, can I talk or not?
I'm looking it up in the code right now on the on-street, off-street parking question, and I don't think it clarifies one way or the other, but it does call the required spaces off-street parking spaces. And I went to the definition of a parking space, and it specifically says that a parking space is an off-street location where vehicle parking is provided. I don't think we can count on-street spaces towards the off-street parking requirements.
So I think I just heard that sometimes you have, because of property constraints, changed where the islands need to be. Can we just call this landscaping a whole bunch of islands? And then the islands required?
There you go.
It's at the end of a row.
I would say from the standpoint of what we've done before, no, that's not how it was done. It was more of taking islands and fitting them in different locations, not saying the frontage counts as the island, but that's interpretation. I'm just telling you what we've done in the past.
Well, I know on the, the food court, they, we, again, we needed to have the islands at the end, and that was not gonna work. And they ended up putting the islands in different spots, which went with what was there. So why couldn't we do the same kind of thing here? And it looks like you already have one, right? There's one right there in the picture. And the question is, how many do we need, right? Isn't that kind of the question of the council?
I think I just need one more.
I, I guess, I guess if we're, if we're stuck on that, and we need one more on that north-facing property, it's not gonna be beautiful because we're probably not gonna, you know, we're gonna struggle, but if, if that meets the letter of the law, we will try to figure out how to put one in there. Yeah. Even though I might think it's, but that's okay. I can leave that at the end and we can put one in there as long as it's not too bad.
Okay. Does any commissioner wish to comment or make a motion at this time? And did we need to, before we get to that, Matt, did we need to do anything about your letter memo that we got today about the?
No, part of our presentation was that we include that notice in the final decision. But if the commission doesn't tell me anything to the contrary, we would just add that and consider it part of your motion because it was part of the presentation.
Okay.
Anne, can we get the, can we get the picture back up that shows the parking spaces?
Sure, let me actually go to the.
Sorry.
Okay, site plan, here you go.
Okay, what was Mr. Nolan's latest one to add one? Where?
If you go up to the three on the end.
Well, yeah.
We, on one end of the other of where those three parking lots end up, we would be willing to put one, like I said, it's hard for, because I believe in common sense, and I believe this is strongly against common sense, but we would be willing to put one back there that nobody will ever see, that doesn't create any function for anybody to, and we may start cutting back on what we're gonna do on that.
Next to number 25 or 27?
Yeah.
Good job. You can design a site with islands to not be a hazard. They just don't wanna do it.
So I guess I would like to clarify for the record so that when we make the motion, it can be included, that what we have done is to say that the existing island below 16 is sufficient for that entire row, that the row from 17 to 24, we interpret as, would have a safety hazard if we put an island in, but that we do need another one up on the, either on 25 or 27.
I'll second that. Want me to make that motion?
Interpretation, Matt?
I wrote all that down. We would still need a motion from somebody to actually approve the project as well.
I wanted to know how do we, how do we incorporate that interpretation into the motion, or do we need to at all? Or as interpreted during the meeting?
So I have a question. So doesn't the code say it needs to be one on each end?
No, it just, and again, we had it up on the screen before. It just says rows. Hang on, let me bring that up.
Yeah, would you? Because I, I'd forgotten what it says.
Okay, there's, hang on. Wrong direction, hang on. There you go.
At the ends of parking rows.
Yeah. So just one.
It's not saying each end, it's just saying at the ends.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Our interpretation is that it is at the end, one end.
Okay, okay. Just double checking, you guys, that's all.
Okay, so does anyone have a motion then? There is a motion on page three. Well, no, that's my page three.
I can, here's one on the screen if you like.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion based on the finding of fact in the staff report and the conditions of approval. The proposal project satisfies the applicable criteria, and the planning commission approved site plan SP 20.02 with the conditions of approval. We already made those as the conditions of approval?
With the modification that was discussed, and I'll clarify that again just for the record, which includes no new islands on row one through 16, no new islands on row 17 through 24, and one new island on row 25 through 27. That's what I heard.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
That's correct. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Great, thank you. We would like to thank all who have testified tonight. Your comments have been very helpful. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
City plant, thank you, Mr. Nolan's.
Thanks, Mr. Nolan's.
Yep.
City planner update, what do you got for us?
Well, our new code was adopted by city council, and so that takes 30 days to go into effect, and those days are counting down right now. I forget the actual day that it goes into effect. Do you know that?
November 12th.
November 12th? So on November 12th, it'll go into effect. So any applications that are submitted before the 12th will still be applied to the old code, or rather, the old code will apply to that project. And we do have an applicant or two that is looking at trying to get a project in before that code changes. And we did have one applicant already for the building with some fire damage down in the south end of Old Salem. He brought an application in intentionally before the code changed, so that some of the uses that are currently applicable in his zone could be applied to his building that would not be allowed on the new code. Just a heads up.
Other than that, we didn't issue any, issue any kind of permits or anything in the, in the last interim since we spoke, so that's the extent of my update.
Can I ask a question? Didn't the city council make a couple of changes to what we did? I mean, they were minor, but wasn't there something? Because we didn't get notified of that.
There, there were a few changes. They weren't very substantial. I'm gonna be hard-pressed to remember them all off of memory, but it was related to accessory structures. They passed the accessory structure section of the ordinance requiring a 10-foot side yard setback. And at the hearing, they changed their mind on that and decided that they wanted that to go ahead and match the main building, so it would be a five-yard setback. And then they added a second change that said in the RL district or zone, that a two-story building would have an eight-foot side yard setback instead of a five yard, or five-foot setback. And the third change, what was the third change? Those are the first two.
Well, the, the last change related to caretaker units. And quite honestly, that was an oversight on all of our part, John and myself more than anybody. And that's that caretaker units were permitted in some zones, but they weren't permitted in the general industrial or light industrial. And we felt it was, or limited industrial. And we felt it was very appropriate to allow a security onsite caretaker unit, meaning a single-family home on an industrial site, and that's essentially somebody who plays a role of security. And so they did make that change as well to allow that with a conditional use permit on, in those two zones. But those were the only three changes they made that were substantive.
Okay, anything else, Matt?
No, we're working frantically to implement all those different sections of the new code, and so you're gonna see things pop up as we get to them, like updating the GIS layers from the county and getting all the documents updated on the website. And so we're working behind the scenes to make sure that all of those are ready and accommodating all the changes that everybody asked for, and we'll have those up shortly.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for the, good to the order or whatever else?
If you want a copy of the new code, tell Jake.
Sure, Steve, go ahead.
This is for Janelle. Instead of Colomer, an Old Salem road down in front of Humpty's Dump down there, they just did some road patching, and it's unacceptable. I hope they're coming back to resurface it a little bit.
I can take a look, but that is a county road, so we don't have any jurisdiction over their patching standards.
Right, right.
I'm not sure what, what took place there.
Well, run over with your car and you'll know it. So their patches right, right up, right, you know, in the car paths, so.
Well, it is possible it's temporary patching.
I hope, I'm, I'm assuming it is, but I don't know. I just wanted to bring it up real quick. I'm done.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else? Can we adjourn then at 7:11? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Hasta la vista, babies.
Thank you.